After my sister. She didn't get a chance to. Well, she was showing me. But, uh, so I have. And she had some wonderful fun. I was thinking.
There or not, I mean, do you? I can, I can, I can maybe run some off. Yeah, I had no idea. We're usually not. Don't start the meeting without me. Yeah.
Uh, she's getting, she's pretty much.
Hey, good morning.
Let's see if Commissioner Law has a Christmas tie on. He does. I got one that I own with my dog on it.
I've only gotten through one third of mine.
My Westy's, Westy Christmas tie.
I don't have any dog ones. Never had any dogs in their Christmas ties.
It's Christmas every day for dogs.
Yeah. Yeah. The delay, excuse me, can I have your attention? Delay is because our chief, uh, Chief Clerk had to go get some more copies of the agenda. So as soon as she gets back, we'll get the meeting started.
You know, I got stuck shopping, maybe tomorrow.
That's what I'm gonna start. I just had to get gift cards.
Gift cards and liquor.
Gift cards are the way I got it.
I gotta go to, I gotta go to. Uh, I gotta go back.
I go, I go like New Byers, Marshall Allen, Nemo Colen Outlet, TJ Maxx. The outlet by the casino at Nemo Colen. Oh, you've never been up there? It's very nice. What they don't sell at the main resort, they put over there greatly within its price.
Where at?
It's in the building right next to the casino. Casino's here, that building right there.
What do they sell?
They sell everything they sell at the resort. But it's cheaper than my cheap.
Don't know who's on, but someone online?
Yes, nobody.
Can you mute them?
There's still a couple people coming in.
Daniel Porch here.
Hmm?
Daniel Porch here.
Let me know when you're ready. Scott's making the recorder on.
Check your mic.
Yep.
Good on mute.
Yep.
All right, we are called to order for the Fayette County Commissioners' meeting. It is Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, approximately ten a.m. If you would all stand, if you can, for a moment of prayer. Pastor Jason Lammer from Fayette Assembly, say.
Let's pray together, Father. We humble our hearts in this moment. God, to lift our eyes to the hills where our help comes from. We thank you that we indeed have an helper, a helper for one has come. We remind ourselves in this season, for unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, and our Prince of Peace. We thank you for the Prince of Peace that rules in our heart, that your word says, that if we let Christ rule in our hearts, that peace will reign in us. So today, God, we pray that your peace be upon our hearts, our minds. Father, we pray your blessing upon those who do not have, those who are hurting without. God, I pray that we would be a community and a people, that God would lift our eyes to you, and Lord would look to one another, and God, as we seek first your kingdom and look to one another, that we would be empowered to do the work that you've called us to do for this day, this hour. We ask your blessing in the, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Go face the flag and plead the belief.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just.
Before we go to public comment on agenda items, uh, if we could ask that you're, uh, that you silenced any of your devices. And if you are online, if you would mute, you can raise your hand if you would like to speak during public comment. Public comment is, has a three-minute time limit. This is a public comment period, not necessarily a question and answer session. If you ask a question and I know the answer, I will answer it. But that's not guaranteed. And you may not yield your time to another, and you will speak from the podium. So right now, we will call for public comment on agenda items only. So, and if you could come to the podium to speak. There is no time, there is no, uh, there's no list. Everybody will be afforded three minutes to speak, if you wish. So I'm gonna ask you to, when you do come to the podium, if you would, uh, state your name. Prior to, uh, that, I would like to read a, a statement. Today, the but, the commissioners are adopting the twenty twenty-five, uh, general fund budget. The budget is approximately fifty-four point one six four million dollars. This is an increase of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars over the adopted budget from twenty twenty-four, uh, and a savings of two point three five million from the amended twenty twenty-four budget. This proposed budget for twenty twenty-five is bare bones. There are no new employees, there's no new projects in the spending plan. Salaries, payroll taxes, benefits, retirement, other fixed costs, and contractual requirements account for eighty percent of this budget. Inflation has taken a toll on the county as materials, papers, envelopes, cleaning supplies, and all that have all increased. Other expenses have risen, including employee healthcare and our pension, or prison, uh, healthcare contract for our inmates. We successfully negotiated two union contracts in twenty twenty-four, which resulted in much-needed pay increases for our corrections officers. That was actually in the paper today. In the addition to inflation, Fayette County has never had to compete for labor like we have this past four years. Despite the inflationary pressures, uh, we worked diligently this year to reduce spending throughout the year, combining departments, which is not, apparently not, uh, the combining of departments, I'll leave my comments to the side, and not filling positions through attrition, they've saved nearly seven hundred thousand dollars. This includes hiring new finance director of the state of the county, four hundred thousand dollars. A spending freeze was instituted in August, mandating only spending for essential services. If the federal government increases spending, they increase debt to fund that spending. If the state increases their spending, they're able to rely on a rainy day fund. Counties do not have these luxuries. We are required to have balanced budgets. Across the state, counties of all types, rural, suburban, urban, Republican, and Democrat, are in the same boat as Fayette County. An informal poll of the other counties revealed that, of the counties that responded, fifty-four of the other sixty-six counties responded. Seventy percent, thirty-eight of those counties, seventy percent are increasing taxes this year, or already did last year. This budget contains county matching funds totaling five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, less than one tenth of one percent. These funds are required to complete two projects, the mill-run walking trail and the Dunlap Creek walking trail that are already approved and in process. There is no money in this budget for the Sheepskin Trail. As those upcoming projects are fully funded, there is no match for the county for those. The, uh, the notion that we only focus on trail building is a fallacy. Working with municipalities and our authorities, these are sampling of over eleven million dollars in federal funding that we are awaiting final decision for Fayette County infrastructure projects. They include Monalan Township Housing Plan, National Pike Water, Redstone Sewer, North Fayette Water, Mason Town Water, Port of Pittsburgh, and Albert Galliter Water. The county seeks funding for a variety of needs, including trails and infrastructure. Since the last meeting in November, the commissioners worked to further reduce the spending from the budget that was proposed then. Given the current financial condition and forecast for the future, the twenty twenty-five budget contains a one point seven mil tax increase that is down from one point nine mil. Given our current financial situation, this is a necessary increase to return Fayette County to a firm financial standard. And I will let either of my colleagues make a statement, if you wish. That's as loud as I, that's as loud as I can talk. I don't know that these are internal mics.
One, two. They're green, but I don't know if they're internal speakers. Probably not.
Either you wanna have a statement?
No, good.
Well, we're done with.
There we go.
There you go. And we are, uh, I read my statement, it will be added to the, uh, the minutes of this meeting. Okay, with that. Check, check. That's better, right? Okay. All right, so we will start our, uh, public comment period. State your name when you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Gina White. I live in the Union Town Area School District.
Give us, give us one second to make sure that, can we? A lot of feedback on the mic.
Is there a round mic with that thing? Or is it just the?
Just.
I don't know.
Is there one like this?
There's a green.
I think it's over there.
I don't know if this is a mic. Is this for the online? I don't know if that's what's causing the feedback. Like, these connected? Turn.
It's on.
Okay. The online concern is with the tax increase, and it's sort of errors.
Gina, give us a check on, on screen.
Are we good? I think that's a lot better. No?
Mary, turn the volume down on these mics.
Is that better?
Now give it to us.
Is that good? I promise I didn't do this on purpose.
Little more.
Is that good? Good?
That's getting better.
Testing, one, two, three. I, I felt like that was a lot better than it was before. Is that better? Okay. Can I start over? Okay. So my name is Gina White. Uh, the same, my concern is with the tax increase. This. No. Is it coming from the TV? Play a search in the mic. Is that better? Okay. Are we good? Oh my, is that better? Yeah, I, I can speak loud enough. Turn it off. I, I can speak pretty well. I have a pretty, I have three guts, so I speak out on a regular basis. Okay, so my name is Gina. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, so my name is Gina White, I'm from Union Town. What you have been saying about the, um, the inflation has also affected the school districts as well. Um, and we just got a, a tight tax increase from, uh, the, the school taxes as well. So this, this is really affecting a lot of people on more than one level. And so with that being said, um, it's been said that John Marietta has cost the county money by asking for the county for a recount, something that was legally entitled to him by law. Not giving him that opportunity, the county has costed themselves money. The county has acquired massive debt under your administration. Would your county commissioners be willing to liquidate some of your own personal assets to donate to the county treasury? So I, I'm not really expecting you to answer that, I'm just asking you to consider how this is affecting everybody personally, but also how it's affecting the districts. And I didn't know if there was, uh, anything that the commissioners can do in, in order to help get grant funding for some of the issues that they're gonna need, uh, repairs or such to the buildings, and what your role as commissioners are in that.
Is that?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I.
The question really is, uh.
Do you have a problem, sir? Okay, just, I, you cannot, you cannot interrupt our meeting. Not interrupt our meeting.
Grant money for the schools.
So, so grant money, so there, there is, there is limited grant money. It depends on how, the, you know, grant money is very specific to the, the need of the building.
Right.
You know, we are looking at the grant funding, uh, for some of our properties and consolidating some of our properties, uh, specifically into this building.
Could, I guess, because my concern comes from, um, that some of the districts being in a bind also financially because of inflation also, it was stated. Um, and there's repairs not needed done to, uh, areas throughout the district. I know specifically for Union Town, uh, the stadium, so I wasn't sure if anything was to being done in regards to finding money to help them. They're currently facing an issue with their bathroom and not having wheelchair accessibility, so that's what my concern was about as well.
I, I, yeah, okay. Yeah, we don't, we don't work with the school district, we're gonna say it specifically, ask us.
Okay.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Next up. Just say your name.
My name's Charles Brannan from Leckroon, Pennsylvania, German Township. Uh, the first question I, I have here is why is a meeting scheduled at ten o'clock when most of the people are working? Number two, I'm a retired coal miner, uh, for thirty-seven years in a coal mine, and, uh, this tax increase, uh, my pension is twenty-two hundred dollars a month, plus my social security, and now they're gonna raise the taxes again, and they're pushing people out of Fayette County. They're bringing in restaurants that, that I can't afford to go to. And I have another question. From my understanding, Nemo Colen Woodlands pays no, uh, property taxes or anything. I'm proud of what they do for Union Town and, uh, the, uh, Pavilion going up the mountain at the water trough and the horse station, but I could care less about that. What I care about is being able to survive in German Township and, and in Fayette County. Uh, I have a good friend that moved out because he said Fayette County's way overboard, uh, on their taxes, so he moved to Tennessee. In September, we get letters, or in the newspaper, for people that's delinquent on their taxes. I pay my taxes because I don't, I don't wanna be shamed. Uh, I think that there's some way that, that, that the county could do something about that. For instance, uh, Richard De Senzo, he, uh, he owns a lot of property in German Township. I bought some property off of him and cleaned it up. The supervisors are, uh, ranting and raving, what a great job I did. I picked three hundred tires up off of his property. He reaps everything off the property, don't pay any taxes until he sells it. Well, he's already made his money on it. Why can't there be a, a step up in, if you're delinquent on your taxes, that you pay a little bit more? They run in there the day of the taxes is due, and they give you a few bucks. But yet, the working people are paying the taxes, we're taking a brunt of it. And, uh, I, I just don't understand why they wanna put this on the pensioners. I'm, I'm a pensioner, I can't, I can't, I can't be paying all this money for school taxes. In a fair amount, I'm glad to, but the taxes keep going up. They said when the casino comes in, it's gonna help our tax. We have nothing from, uh, Nemo Colen Woodlands. The only thing that she does, what she does is a tax write-off. And they don't pay any taxes up there. I can't afford to go to Nemo Colen Woodlands. It's a thousand dollars a year membership. Or ten thousand dollars. It, what, what good is it doing us if, if we can't collect any revenue off of it for, for the county? That's all I have to say.
I'm Charity Grim Crouppa, State Representative for the fifty-first district. I stand before you today as a voice for our community, compelled to speak against the proposed tax hike. As elected officials, we must always remember that the government should serve the people, not burden the people. This is the mindset that we as leaders must adopt if we're to honor the trust that's placed in us. Our county is one of the poorest in the state, yet the people here are some of truly the best and the most hard, hardworking. They understand what it means to make tough choices, stretch every dollar, and prioritize what truly matters. Families here grapple with the rising costs of food, utilities, gasoline, and basic necessities. To add to their burden, their financial burden at this time, just is, it's not just unjust, it's out of touch with reality. What makes this proposal even harder to justify is the lavish spending over the last few years at the county level. Instead of focusing on critical needs like clean drinking water, reliable sewage systems, or basic infrastructure, your top priorities seem to have been acquiring real estate that no private investor would touch, constructing a convenient but totally unnecessary tunnel, and building a recreational bike trail. While such projects may have their place, they do not reflect the immediate pressing needs of our residents, nor do they reflect a modest budget. Fiscal responsibility is not about saying no to progress, it's about prioritizing wisely. It's about understanding that like the families we serve, we must live within our means. When resources are scarce, elected officials should focus on what matters most. Fix what's broken, provide what's needed, and delay what can wait. Let me be clear, no one disputes the value of recreation and long-term planning, but in a county as poor as ours, the sad reality is, is that at this particular moment, we cannot afford the bells and whistles that wealthier counties enjoy. Every dollar of taxpayer money represents someone's hard work, someone's sacrifice. In a community-first model of government, priorities are set by the people, not by abstract plans, pet projects, or aspirations that are totally disconnected from the struggles of the average person. We must remember that government doesn't create wealth. It exists to protect and wisely manage the resources entrusted to it. We must spend for what we need, not what we want in this moment. The fact that a nation, or in this instance, a county, cannot tax its way into prosperity is not a new idea, it is not a novel idea. The residents of this county work hard and sacrifice every day to make ends meet. They deserve a government that respects their sacrifices and uses their resources wisely. I urge you to reject this tax increase in its entirety, and I could go on, but I realize it's three minutes and that's gonna buzz shortly. By the way, where's the solar ordinances that were promised to us months ago? By the way, where's the solar ordinances that were promised to us months ago?
I'd like, I'd like to talk. First, I wanna make some things clear. The money that we spent...
Our money.
That came from the federal government. We had to spend it by 2026. If we didn't, it was going back to the federal government. We did. Yes, we did. Yeah, I believe we did. I, listen, I have the floor. I have the floor. Protocol. So we, we invested in this building. We got it for zero dollars. Zero dollars. We needed, we needed to get...
But he gets to speak.
Everything that Carrie said is true and honest, and you guys need to take the accountability.
I'm explaining what... All right. All right. Let me, so, let me appeal to you. Now, let me get back to what I was saying. We got this building for zero dollars. The parking lot in back saves us $50,000 a year. We were paying for our county vehicles to be in the parking garage. That's wiped out. Over a 10-year period, that'll be a $500,000 savings, right there alone. This building, uh, we needed a place to put our voting machines. They were in the bait, the brand-new machines we got. If we didn't have this building, we would've had to store them in the basement of the 911 building, which would've damaged those machines. Now we have a climate-controlled room where they can be worked on and they can be preserved for many more years. That's, uh, we, we had people on top of each other on the fourth floor of the, of the courthouse. In one room, we had six assessors that were sitting in the same room, uh, across the table from each other. They had no workspace. You know, that, this was a time when this money came down from the federal government in the middle of the pandemic, and they were stressing that we needed the social distance. That's why we went and bought, and, so we, we actually are saving money with this building. We combined two directorships. That saved us $100,000. So any cost that, on an annual basis, to run this building is really a wash because we've cut in other areas. And we have a good facility here. We have a, a, we, we've, we've salvaged, the building would've been lost. The roof was ready to go. It would've been like the, the Union Station in Brownsville. We, we preserved a building right in the center of Uniontown. So this, it, there's no crazy spending on this building, uh, that I see at all, and that's, that's the truth. Now, you take the, uh, law office that, or our district attorneys, and we got that through CARES Act money. Any, uh, any renovations we did to this building, the Gallatin Building, we got, uh, we got a million dollars in, in, uh, LSA money to upgrade it. And any other money we spent was from the American Rescue Act money. So there is no general fund spent on this. Uh, the, the Farron's Law Building that we got through CARES Act, we, we purchased that. We used ARPA money for the walkway to connect it. Just doing that, they, uh, that building they were occupying had two security guards in there. It cost us 40, $140,000 a year to, uh, to, to have security over there. Once we opened that walkway, we were able to, um, save $140,000 because they come through the courthouse security and go over. So that was a savings. Over a 10-year period, that'd be $1.4 million we saved. All this was done by that federal money that we got and every county got. So we tried to, we tried to expand that. We took people out of the DEA's office that were on top of each other. We gave them more working space there. We moved the public defender's office that was down in the basement that had, during court week, 15 people in a small area. We let them go where the DA is. We, we expanded out to give us better working conditions for our employees. And, and, and I, I think those were good decisions. You know, I stand by them. You know, so to say we wasted money, that was federal money that came to us that if we didn't spend it, by 2026, we were gonna have to send it back to the federal government. And, and, you know, that, that's, we, we came up with a plan to do these things. And, and, uh, I think our, uh, 911, uh, building is, uh, you know, we took, uh, the Veterans Affairs Office. We put it down here. We have the Tax Claim Bureau down here now. We have planning and zoning. We've got better working conditions, and we didn't spend a dime. It was federal money. There were, this thing, you, you keep hearing about us spending all this money. We have cut our general fund budget, which we're looking at today, and general government expenses by 14%. And, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can to, to cut costs. You know, this, this fallacy that we're spending money crazily, we had to spend that money or we would've lost it. It would've gone back to the federal government. So that's, you know, I, I wanted to set the record straight on that.
State your name. Can I just encourage one thing? There's a lot of people here, there's probably a lot of people that wanna speak. Please be courteous enough to hold your comments and to be quiet to give the courtesy to the person who is speaking. So that this, I, I don't know if you guys brought lunch, but otherwise, that's what's gonna turn into a very, very long, long meeting if we get our people that are supposed to be speaking, if we continue to interrupt them. So please be courteous and, uh, just hold your comments to yourself. And if you wanna speak, then, then express your comments. Thank you.
State your name.
Donnie McCarty, Markleisberg. I had other things to say, but in reference to this building, cost zero. Okay? If it costs zero, why are we looking for $15 million loan to pay for what? Okay, yeah, we have a prison. A prison is a specialty building. I understand how to build that. You got the building down in Dunbar that's vacant. You have 80% of this building that's vacant. That is waste. Waste and abuse. And I don't believe it costs zero. Okay?
Yeah, we got it for zero dollars.
When you go for, please do not interrupt me. When, when we go, you all were talking about a 1.9% increase. That's 28%. That's what it's gonna be to me. People talk about fixed income all the time. Everybody's on a fixed income. Unless you're a small business owner or a contractor, it's gonna go up and down. Everybody else makes what you make. Okay? I can't afford to stay in this county. This county is beautiful, wonderful. It's shrinking. The population is declining. Why are we spending more? We should be spending less. Why are we buying buildings when our population is falling? What do we need them for? They've been good for 50 years. Why buy a building? Why have to fix a roof? Why have to do the whole infrastructure here when every other government agency leases their property? That way, if you grow, you lease more. If you shrink, you leak, lease less. You all have spent and spent and spent, and that's what put us where we're at today. Now you're talking, oh, it's not gonna be 1.9. It's only gonna be 1.7. That's still 25% to everybody. I don't care if you don't own property, you got a rent, you're gonna end up paying more for this. And like Charity said, this is a time when we cannot afford it. Please, think about what you're doing. You work for the people. And as far as the federal money, that's our money too!
So I'm not sure what Dunbar building you're talking about.
And supposedly, 8,000 square foot building that you all built is standing empty?
We didn't build that.
That's Fayette.
Oh, 65,000. Excuse me.
That's a Fayette.
We didn't build that. That's not our building.
Well, where's the $15 million for building go? If you paid zero for this, which I do not...
I'm just setting the record straight. We, we did not say Fayette property.
Okay.
State your name, please.
Uh, my name is Melanie Patterson, and I'm from Washington Township. Um, and I didn't, I thought we were not allowed to comment back and forth as a question-and-answer thing. So I'd just like, you know, for, for going on, for you to listen to the rest of us, and then maybe you can comment afterwards. But being with Christmas a week, a week away, I thought it'd be appropriate to bring the Grinch in here. Because I agree with Charity Grimm 100%. I wish we could duplicate her. That's a common sense legislator who, you know, can you be my state representative or state senator? I mean, that's common sense politician. That's what we elect you to do, exactly what she said. So I'm not gonna duplicate any of that, but I'm gonna say first and foremost, the duty of a county commissioner, and the sole reason for us hiring you is to look hard at improving the county and the government efficiency and holding the line on taxes. Budgets are difficult, and it can be a challenge, whether it's for your own family or your own business, or in this case, Fayette County. And we, the taxpayers of Fayette County, expect you to be good stewards of our funds, as many of us here in the county have in the past four years been feeling the burden of inflation due to the federal policy of this current administration. Uh, you must do everything possible to be fiduciary responsible and to protect the taxpayers who elected you. And remember, we are your bosses. And also, number two, why would you go against, with this proposed tax increase, um, go against the sentiment of your Fayette County constituents, who on November 5th, 2024, overwhelmingly, both Democrats, Republicans, and independents voted for Donald Trump and the MAGA agenda, which is at the top of his list, is to reduce and eliminate taxes, with the ultimate goal of letting us keep more of our money and putting money back into our pockets of hard-working Americans, where it belongs in the first place. As we say goodbye to 2024 and welcome in the new year, we're hopeful and we're looking forward to better and brighter days in this country and this county with the newly-elected president, the GOAT in my lifetime of all time. And for us, we finally have a leader in the White House who's fighting for us, we the people, and all of us here, including Fayette County. Don't be a Grinch this Christmas, and we ask that you do not vote for a tax increase. And for the people of Fayette County, thank you, God bless you, and Merry Christmas to you and all of your families. Thank you.
My name is John Lennon from Vanderbilt, Pennsylvania. I own multiple businesses, um, in Fayette County, in Worshington County. I'm a ninth-grade dropout. I've worked very hard to be where I'm at today. I also want you to know that I've never filed bankruptcy. I've never got a grant. I've worked my whole life and worked around a budget, and I've succeeded. My net worth is now $7 million. If I could do that, Fayette County should be able to do that. Anybody up there filed bankruptcy? So, in general, you guys wanna take $550,000 infrastructure money and put it into a walking park? You're fired. You have a $15 million deficit? And you have the audacity to take infrastructure money and put it into a goddamn walking park? Pay your $15 million off! Then you have the audacity to ask us to raise taxes 28% on people on fixed incomes? After we just went through four years of hell and our increases went up so damn much that these people on these fixed incomes gotta choose between noodles and noodles? Or paying our electric bill? Look in the mirror, cuz you're going to hell! If you raise these taxes, you're going to hell! Cut expenses, eliminate programs, and balance the goddamn budget. I own a property on Route 51 that used to be the Periopolis Moose. That organization filed for a grant. They gave them $150,000 to put a roof on that building. They didn't put a roof on the building. They put the building up for sale and pocketed the $150,000. And not one of you commissioners went back to say, Moose International, you didn't earn that money. We want it back. Why? It's bullshit, and it needs to stop. Fraser School District built brand-new schools. I offered them a half a million dollars for the last school building. They turned me down. Instead, they spent a million dollars tearing the building down and sort of took a person on the school board for $360,000. Why wasn't there an investigation done? You talk about needing more money? You talk about needing more money for education, for Fayette County? Start with the, start with the fraud. These people on fixed incomes worked their whole life to retire, and they shouldn't be burdened with having to live in poverty. 62 years old, you wanna do something, vote today and cap it. No more property taxes for primary residents for people 62 years old. That's what you should be doing. And you wanna talk about your budget? If you saved all the money you claim you saved by taking this building for zero, there should be more than enough money left over that we don't need to raise taxes. So is it smoke and mirrors or is it truth? That's what I have to tell you, folks. Think about it before you vote, because God's watching.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, tone it down a little bit. State your name, please.
Uh, my name is Robert Patterson. From Washington Township, Fayette County. And I, as a former manufacturer in Mon, in the Mon Valley for 75 years, I know the importance of having skilled labor workforce. At one time in the 1950s, had an employee, I had an employee, my father had an employee, brass person who used to drive from Johnstownsmun, Ongahella, every day for work. He eventually moved here and raised a family. So I think it's time to start thinking outside the box in ways to generate revenue and increase your tax base with people wanting to move here and purchase homes. With President Trump in the White House, a president who wants to make things in America, you have a major employer and manufacturer in Heartland Fabrication in Brownsville. My son works as a welder at Heartland. And they are bursting at the seams with potential orders and new barges being built every day, manufactured items all over the country and the world for that matter. So wouldn't Brownsville be a nice place to start with renovating housing options for workers who may be from Westmoreland, Washington, Allegheny Counties, as well as Ohio and West Virginia? And who will want to relocate? Focus needs to be on attracting people to move in Fayette County and raise a family. That will keep Fayette County alive and into the future. Not a bike trail. Thank you.
So just, uh, for the record, we have, uh, spoken with the, the people at Heartland about housing in Brownsville. We have a lot of, uh, empty lots in Brownsville that would be a good place for housing. So we, we actually have, we actually have not that.
We have a housing task force that we've been meeting monthly, sometimes every couple weeks, and we're trying to get a plan together to start, uh, you know, facilitate more housing in the county.
A lot of thought, get things moving.
Yeah. More, more of the, uh, you know, middle range to higher-end range, so.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Gino Gallo. I'm from Conneville. Now, we've seen this before. 2020, a three-mil increase. You, you raised ta, or, I'm sorry, back in 2020, you guys raised taxes, and here we are again. You're raising them again, now 1.7. And let's be honest about the federal money. You got a lot of federal money that came into here. That didn't cost us anything? Are you kidding me? You bought liabilities with the money. You leveraged the money into more debt. You have built a framework here that's gonna cause more taxation in the future, not less. We know that if you, you either have to cut services or you have to raise taxes. It is far time that we cut services. We did not need all those buildings. And, you know, and I don't think the taxpayers should be in the historic preservation business. That's not our business. We have got to trim the spending down. You just can't look, I could make it, try to make a scholarly, scholarly argument like Charity Grimm did, but let's, let's look at the compassionate. These people can't afford it. You're trying to design a county for people that aren't here yet. I just don't understand. We have a shrinking population that's been shrinking for the last 50 years. It doesn't take a, a seessayer to figure out that we're gonna keep getting smaller and the bills are gonna go up. This isn't a surprise. You guys did exactly what you did, uh, the three of you, raised those taxes, three mils, and you're, now you're raising them again. You can't blame past administrations. At some point, you have to take responsibility. You have to make the cuts. And your spending and your decisions, it's good that the communities here, that you can see them and look them in the eye and explain this, because there is no explanation. in the eye and explain this, because there is no explanation. That's all.
I'd like to address that. I do not believe that the tax increase in 2020 was three mils, it was less than that. It was less than that. Can I, can I speak? Can I speak? And that was primarily for the prison debt service and for the new voting machines. We haven't really had a general fund tax increase on the, since 2016 on the general fund. Most of, primarily, the 2020 was for debt service. For the jail and for the, for the, for the voting machines.
State your name, please.
Morning, gentlemen. My name's Dan Silbaugh, I'm from Brownsville. Have a few questions, and I'd just like to give a general statement from my family. Want to just, would like to know if there's a, first of all, detailed explanation of the cost on the new prison, while I understand that was desperately needed here. I think it may have gone overboard in what the costs were. I also just happen to be one of the elected folks on the, in Brownsville to review the books every year. So is there a, also detailed explanation on the federal loan? Because I know we have to provide that on anything that we do to turn in the audit. I wanted to talk a little bit, though, about not, just this increase in general. I have a job working in New Stanton and received word last month that I'm going to have a cost of living increase this year of 1.5%. So, this, this is annoying, to say the least, going home and telling my wife that, you know, we're going to have a wash again, there's, there's nothing new. I have raised six children in Fayette County, in the Brownsville school system, have been very vocal there, have been very vocal in the borough. When they decided that they were going to try to get rid of the local police department, I questioned each of them and asked them, if you can specifically give us reasons of why you need that to happen, then please do so in, in public fashion. And I would request the same from you all, individually, of your thoughts of how this increase, what you see, what you investigated, and how this is going to benefit us in the future. I also see the Industrial Development Authority. I'd like to know exactly what they're doing. We have empty business parks all throughout this county. I have, in, my last child is a senior this year. I have my oldest son, who lives in Green County, who they decided to increase there, and he's paying an extra $160 a month in taxes now, is considering leaving the county and possibly moving out of state. I have a son who's serving in the U.S. Army, has a family, is retiring, wants to come home, and I can't give him any good recommendation for here, especially hearing this. This is heartbreaking for me, because my family is embedded, the Silbaugh name is in this county, all over the place. I would really appreciate the availability for him to have a life here. Quick, quick ending. I have another son in the U.S. Navy who has found folks all over the place since he's been there, of folks back from this county. Would also like to have him be able to return home here someday. We can't provide them anything good with this, this succession. Thank you all.
My name's Kenneth.
Yeah, on the jail, the cost of the jail, we were actually under budget, around, I believe it was around 46 million is what our total budget was on the jail. And also, the reason, the biggest need, and I knew you had, you'd said about the jail being a need, we were on the threshold of having a federal courts tell us that we were going to have to build the jail. And what we did as a board is we had that off at the pass, so we had control, because if the federal courts would have told us, they would have gone like this, here's the plan, we don't care what it costs. So what we did is we took a very active role in that, and I know that that was a hard bite. We raised the taxes that year for the debt service for one mil and to cover that jail. And we're doing things now to structure that so that we're well with under, well under the increase of that one mil for that jail. So, but the big thing was that the legal side of that whole, the old jail was going to eat us alive. And, and there were just different lawsuits across the board for several years prior before the move, that now that area in particular has decreased to almost nothing because of the jail. So, the new jail. So that's, it was a huge need. I was a huge advocate for being one on that, because I knew what the repercussions were in the future. And that's what I was looking at the way through in that jail in particular. And, and I will say that I do look at the future, as you were talking about, as your son being in the Navy. Thank you.
State your name.
My name's Kenneth Wayne Rhodes, I'm from Conneville. I'm worried, I'm not even worried about this taxes, I'm worried about the needles and stuff. You guys spend all this money on funding for buildings and all this stuff, can't you find a funding for picking up needles or something in Conneville? I got seven or eight little nephews and nieces, man, goes down the park. There's 50 friggin' needles laying there. I mean, can't you guys do something about that? I mean, there's, can't you put funding in your funding for, for somebody to, for a crew to go pick up stuff like that?
So?
I mean, it's common sense. You guys spent all this money on, on all this other stuff, right? But you can't fix the roads? You guys put all this money in buildings, but you can't fix a pothole? I mean, it's common sense. And you guys got, you guys, one of you guys is bankrupt, $350,000. I mean, what the hell, man? You guys shouldn't even, you guys should be fired!
All right, can we respond if you're, if you want to ask a question? I'll respond to these questions.
Okay, go ahead, buddy.
So first off, the county doesn't do roads. There are no county roads. It's state or municipal responsibility.
Okay.
Okay. We do have funding through a separate, outside of the general fund, through a separate fund that is for opioid remediation. And so if that's something that, you know, this is the first I'm hearing that there is a needle problem in Conneville, so if you would like to, so if you would like to, to contact us, maybe that's a program that we can fund through that other program.
I mean, I really appreciate, I mean, I hate to see my little-
I'm just saying, but I, I don't know about it, I-
Okay.
And that's also, that program also has federal and state restrictions on what you can and can't spend.
Right, I'm not saying we can, I'm saying we could look into it.
We may not be able to do it, or the restrictions that's put on that funding.
Okay, I bought, and then plus, I bought a couple houses in Conneville, too. And you guys are talking about raising my taxes, I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, I paid, I paid $20, $2,700 last, last year for taxes for two, for two houses. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, don't you think? I mean, it's, and I, and I have to put money into them, you know what I mean? I'm sticking all this money into them, and, you know, you guys are going to hire my taxes. I just spent $22,000 putting money into this, this house that I just bought, you know? And it's worthless, you know, because if you, you raise my taxes, I might as well try to sell the building, the house that I just bought, that I was going to try to rent to my niece, you know, for her kids and everything, so they could have a place to stay. That's what I do for my families, you know what I mean? I know what you guys do for yours, but that's what I do for mine. I appreciate my families, and I appreciate everything everybody does for me. What I'm saying is, you know, you, you shouldn't raise the taxes on us people. Look at me, I got, I don't have nothing, I don't have nothing, I don't have nothing. And what, do you want me to stay with nothing? That's why I'm trying to buy houses, you know, to, to, to improve myself. But if you hire these, if you hire the taxes, there ain't, I don't have no, I don't have no choice but move back to Detroit with all my family. So, you know, there's probably 50 of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome, move on. State your name, please.
My name's Ed Stanish, living in South Union Township. It seems like every year we go through this. It's either the township, the school district, the county, you know, raising taxes. Somewhere, somewhere it's got to end. And, you know, I know the prison overrun probably is part of the reason for this, because there was a significant overrun of the prison with, you know, things that were done and that weren't done right, or needed to be repaired, fixed, whatever. I have a good friend who lives in Morgantown, he's an engineer and builds housing. I asked him, I said, you know, they're running out of room down there. I said, well, why don't you move up into Fayette County, you know? He said, oh, no. He said, too many rules and regulations, he said, too many taxes. He said, there's no way we could ever do anything like that. I think it's time, you know, that we sat down and we started, I guess, going over this whole system in Fayette County, and start, start from the bottom up, and start getting it right. And one way by not getting it right is to increase taxes. I, I don't know where, where else, I'm, I'm 76, I've been retired now, you know, I'm on a fixed income. Where myself and all these other residents of this county are going to go if these taxes keep going up and up? They're going to move out, they're going to move somewhere else. And that's exactly what's happened, that's why our population's declined. And I think, I know at least one of you Commissioners, when you ran, one of the things, you know, you told me was that as long as I'm a Commissioner, we'll never increase taxes. Well, think about that a little bit, who said that and when? And I think better wake up and start realizing, you got to work for us, okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name's Bruce Cocker, and I'm the council president at Mason Town Borough. And I was just, I kind of beat Vince up yesterday. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now, it's the hot seat. But, as you remember, back in '21, in this room, there was 14 of us that sat here, when I, and, and I sent some of our council people to the school board, because we adopted a program, it's a tax abatement program. And here's the idea of that, would you rather, if you need $20, would you rather have-
Is this going to be regarding the budget? Is this going to get to the budget that we're talking on, on items on our agenda?
This is to help you make budget.
Okay.
As it always has been. Maybe you didn't understand that, but anyway. So we sent, we, we adopted the LERTA program, it's a, it's a IDP ARTE. It's a tax abatement program, it's only three or five years. And this is how you grow. If you need $20, would you rather have 10 people paying $2, or five people paying $4? And the theory is, you'd rather have 10 people paying $2. So, we adopted it, and we sent it to the school board, I sent to the council people there, and they adopted it contingent upon the Commissioners. Well, some things happened, that's when Harry Brownfield was here. He somehow took it upon himself to circle back to the school board, which I have the presentation that he gave, and said that it would, he'd give them a bunch of lies, that it punished, you know, the people that, on the block. What do you mean? If you're, if you're going to fix the house up or put a new house, we, we have a block party. That's the whole idea here, they're going to be paying more to the tax base. And so, anyway, so we met again, and then Harry passed away. And then that's when Jim Hersick came. And we wanted to be a pilot program. And I know some of these guys weren't sure how the program worked. You know, on the abatement, whatever tax base they're getting, you still get. It's after the three and five years, you start getting more. So you're attracting people in. And, and they want to grow the county, they need to, just like we want to grow Mason Town. But you have to, you have to have incentives. And, and this is one of the incentives. And I come again today, I know Jack might have thought it was, on, what would we call that? That you couldn't just do it for Mason Town?
Just some uniformity issues.
Uniformity issues?
One bloody-
Well, I, I get it. And, and it's supposed to cost a lot of money, but I think Jim Hersick understood that before he left, but we just never got to that point. We met again at the courthouse, and then I think we're just dead in the water on that program. But I think it's something that we need to look at for future. It won't help your, your problems in the short run now, where you're at, you're at. But we need to look at the future, because Mason Town sure is, and I think the county needs to. Thank you.
So, if I could just respond to that for, for a second, there, there may be other programs coming up that are similar to that, that aren't as onerous in the administration of, of the program. And as soon as we know that, we will be reaching out to Mason Town? We will be reaching out to? There, I'm just, and, and as far as being a pilot program, we had already turned this program down to Union Town, Conneville said, if you get it, if Mason Town gets it, we want it. So it was going to be county-wide, and at that point, it was an administrative nightmare for our staff. And so we would have had to hire people to, at least one person to administer that. So that's why that particular program went to the way.
Mark Barnes. You say you're looking for cuts. I've got a couple that I've just thought about. This is not the 1800s where we have tax collectors come to our homes to collect taxes. When they do collect them and people don't pay, they send them to you guys. Is this correct? Okay, why don't we, we need to get rid of the tax collectors? Was there seven, nine of them? I have no idea what they make. They need to be gone.
There's 40, 41 of them.
Okay, 41.
The one that gets it collected in the treasury.
They need to be gone. We need two clerks, full-time, at this courthouse, shipping the taxes out, collecting it, then they can turn it over to you. And to my understanding, do we not bring back a judge that retired at $500 a day? Tell me if I'm wrong.
There's always a senior judge.
He retired. He should be gone.
Yeah, it's on the state's side, the state actually is in their, their funding for that judge, for all the judges.
How many magistrates do we have? We don't need this many magistrates. This is just a few ideas that I just sit here and thought about while y'all were talking. Thank you for my time.
Appreciate the ideas. The, as far as the tax collectors, that would have to be changed legislatively, because I looked into that.
We need all work on this.
Yeah, that, that would be a state legislator, have to introduce legislation and, and do that.
And the state sets the number of district judges, too, the state, that's the-
Do we need to correct this?
That's the Supreme Court, essentially.
And there's more, I mean, there's more than that. When we all start looking into it, you guys, I'm telling you, we're all going to look. It's over.
Hi, my name's Jeff Graham, resident of Georgia's Township. I'm here to object to the Biden 13, 1.9 mil increase. Object to the notion that every time the county gets in trouble with their finances, that they turn to the property owners of the county to take more from them, to meet their obligations. During the 21 years that my wife and I've lived here, we've never been asked what services we want. We haven't received any new services since we arrived here, but our taxes have increased multiple times. During your testimony today, you've let us know that you've made good decisions, you've made it more comfortable for county employees to do their work. Meanwhile, the people face all the same challenges that the county does, only they have no one to turn to, they have no one to tax, they have no way to increase their income. And we all know that when property owners don't meet the obligations to the county, their property is seized to make retro, make it all even for the county. Who do the people turn to? You have to protect us.
I just keep asking.
And so I reject the notion that you need another 1.9 mil from the people. And you listen to the people that have shown up here and would be happy to offer their contributions and ideas. We're here because we don't agree that your decisions are sound and that we must pay. And that's why I can't hear today.
Hello.
What's your name?
My name's John Holt, and I'm from Farmington, PA. And I'm a member of the Union Town School District, and- Can you hear me?
That's not, you have to speak loud.
My name's John Holt and I'm from Farmington, PA. And I'm a member of the Union Town School District and- Can you hear me?
That's not, you have to just speak loud.
It might be my throat.
Sorry about that.
It's been a tax company, but my name's John Holt. I'm on the Union Town Area School Board. Sorry about that. So I was kind of disappointed with the time that you guys selected for this meeting at ten o'clock. I mean, a lot of us are at work and we're trying to get things done, you know, with the time that we have whenever we're, you know, at work. So having to leave work and come here, it's kind of inconvenient, a ten o'clock meeting. I, I did not care for that at all. And I was late because of it because it's hard to find parking around here whenever you're middle of the day. Everybody's, you know, already been here early and, you know, coming off the mountain, it took a while. But as to raising the taxes on everyone here in the county, I mean, we have several homes that we run out to individuals and their families and, you know, it's going to cost us more and it's going to end up trickle down and it's going to cost them more because everybody has to come up with this money somehow. And, I mean, when are we going to stop and realize that, you know, there's not this endless stream of money flowing into this county? And why don't we look back at the budget and come up with ideas in order to trim some of the fat off of this so that we don't have to raise taxes as high as what you guys are planning to do? And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good morning.
State your name, please.
My name's Don Takish. I live in Dunbar. And I was born and raised in Union Town. I've seen what happened to this city over the years. Used to walk these streets when it was very vibrant out there, a lot of business. And I see it just doesn't exist any longer. But the reason I'm here, I'm with the Yoc River Trail Council and I'm here in support of the trails. In Conneville, we maintain twenty-five mile a trail as the Yoc River Trail Group. We're all volunteers, approximately twenty-five of us. Thirteen or fourteen are on the trail at least every week throughout the summer and fall and winter. This year, we had a budget of a hundred thousand dollars plus that we raised on our own. Ninety-eight percent of that money was spent back in the community of Conneville, Union Town, and Mount Pleasant. Statements have been made that the only thing the trail's done for Conneville is to put a bike shop in. Well, there are a lot of bed and breakfasts down there, many restaurants, some grocery stores, and even the fine wine and spirit store in Conneville that would differ from what was said. And, and it's really, if you build it, they will come. We have a trail that traverses from Pittsburgh to Washington DC that we support. All those businesses I just spoke about grew from that trail. Now, there is support from the local residents, but we have people from all over the world. Not from Fayette County, but from worldwide people, statewide people, and people who stayed with us. We know from forty-nine different states in the city of Conneville using the trail. When you speak to these people and ask them why they're here, they're here to ride the trail. They're here to spend money. Union Town has a walking trail, you just said. It goes nowhere. You need to connect it. You need to connect the Sheepskin to the Gap and the Sheepskin to West Virginia, and they will come. We've proven it in Conneville. That's why we're there. Our city council, our business people, they're in support of it. We have a hotel. They advertise on trail sites for their business. They just, they are opening a restaurant. There's a microbrewery claiming to go in. On Third Street in Conneville, all the properties that are, come available, business people are buying them up. A gentleman in this room benefited from the trail this year with the small business he started as a temporary business. Our trail shirt is represented in this room. There he is, a donor walks in our races, supports the trail. And once again, let it be built. Spend the money. You need to bring business to this town. If you can build all the houses you want, if you don't have a purpose for people to come here and stay here, they're not going, they're not going to occupy the houses. So, you know, just support the trails, please. Thank you.
Mr. Takish, the, the money we have in matches for the, the walking trails in this budget, if we took that out, we would lose eight hundred thousand dollars because we already have the state money in hand to, to do the projects. So we're going to, we're getting that mu, we have that much money available to build those trails. And they were part of master plans that we had developed through talking to people in those areas that wanted them.
Well, let me actually tell you something though about these trails. I don't disagree with trails. That may be a misnomer. I don't disagree with trails. I disagree with the cost of trails. The cost of trails are astronomical. When you actually cost, when it costs, we put a mile and a quarter a trail at Point Marion. And the mile and a quarter a trail cost six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars two and a half years ago. Now, when you look at that, the township supervisors will tell you that for that kind of money, they can lay two to three miles of asphalt on the road. Now, when the, when the cost of these trails have escalated to that level, and we still have, and we've seen this across this whole county, and this year in particular because of the drought. And we have people even today still do not have water. I'm sorry, the trail is nice, but it's not sustaining those businesses down there, such as you said in your article, Martin's is getting business from the trail. I'm sure Martin's electric bill is not paid for by people coming in to buy water and, and power bars. Now, I'm, like I said, I'm not against the trail. But what I am saying is there's a priority list that needs to be taken in consideration by every politician, including the departments in the state or in Harrisburg, to really look at the cost of these trails. When you're talking that kind of money on average to start, right now, the average, average amount of a trail is starting at seven hundred thousand dollars a mile? We better really look at our priority list again and see where we're at. Because seven hundred thousand dollars a mile, when we have a bid right now, when we have a proposal from North Fayette Water Authority to give people water down off of Route fifty-one, water lines for one point two million? I'm sorry, I would rather take one point two million and put into a water line than I would six hu, seven hundred thousand into a mile of trail. So that, I know the article was pointed toward me in particular because I'm very vocal in this. I know my priority list and my budget is necessities of life first. First. And then after that, luxuries. And that's where our government has been skewed for a long, long time. They don't pay attention to the needs, they pay attention to the luxuries. And that's why I have a problem with the expense of a trail. Especially when it's on a railroad bed that has been based there for two hundred and fifty years. And by the way, I grew up on the railroad trails. I grew up on the railroad base. I've walked that trail. I've actually, I, I'm from Conneville. I know how many businesses are prospering from that trail. And right now, if you go down to Conneville, you won't see much happening on the trail.
I disagree, I disagree wholeheartedly. You're, sorry, your three minutes is up. And I disagree wholeheartedly. The, we can, we can multitask. The, the notion that we are not applying for water grants is, is a fallacy. I know-
Didn't say that.
I, you know, and we are working with the people out on fifty-one. When that grant opens, we will apply for that grant. The grant was not open with the last time we, that we met with them. So I, I take exception to the fact that, that, that we solely, or we are not working on water and, and sewage for infrastructure for Fayette County. And I will go to bat for the Sheepskin Trail. The completed, the economic, estimated economic impact of the completed Sheepskin Trail is twenty-seven million dollars annually. It would raise four point three million dollars in local, state, and federal taxes and employ three hundred people. That's the estimated economic impact. And that's based on the economic impact that is happening right now with the Great Allegheny Passage.
And the funding source is different from, you know, those, the monies we go for, for the trails is specifically for trails, you know, in, in most cases. And, and it's transportation related and, and other cases. So you can't even apply for sewage and water with the, you know, with the funds that are available for trails. They're totally apples and oranges.
And I actually said what I said earlier. It has to go from the top down to the bottom. The, when you start looking at DCNR and the monies that are transferred to there, DCNR are for parks and luxuries. And I will tell you that our state legislators, Charity Grimm is here today and she and I have talked about this stuff. I've talked to our state senator. They have to get their priority list straight up in Harrisburg. And I will tell you that I've been told that there's a good possibility that there's going to be a very large deficit in the state budget by twenty twenty-six. Are they going to cut there? Are they going to cut the necessities? Yes, I grant you that. But there was a comment made, I'm not sure which one of the people that stood up there said it, a grant is tax dollars. No matter what we want to look at, what we want to name it, what we want to call it, we can call it fees, we can call it gifts. They're still coming out of tax dollar base. No matter what it is, it's coming out of tax dollars. And I'm sorry, I do not agree with the priority list from the state down. I do not agree with the priority list.
So just to go back to a, a reminder, this comment period is for items on the, that are on the agenda. The Sheepskin Trail is not on the agenda. So if you have a, a comment on that, that you can say that to the end of the, end of the meeting. So, sorry.
No, you're fine. My name is Angela Brown. I'm councilwoman for the city of Union Town. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said here today because everybody hit every nail on the head. I just wanted to say, you know, there came a time, I would say, two years ago, where an essential worker was the talk of the town. Everybody glorified us. And the essential worker to me is the working poor and middle class. You loved us two years ago. When that grant funding for millions and millions, it took, for COVID, I mean, money was flowing. Money was flowing. The essential workers, honestly, were the large majority. We put you in the seats that you're in today. We still, we need to return the favors. We can't afford to live here. The taxes are ridiculous already. That's county and city, okay? We have our elders, I have several, several elderly neighbors. If they make five dollars over whatever public assistance allot, they can't even get food stamps. They can't get any help and then you want to raise their taxes. They're homeowners. They're landowners. It's not fair. It's just not fair. And it, I feel the frivolous spending has to stop. It has to stop. And I agree with you, Mr. Lor, there's priorities. There really is. And I really hope that you table this decision, think about it a little longer. But raising taxes is one heck of a Merry Christmas to the community that put you where you are today. It's not fair. It really isn't. And that's all I wanted to say, you know, you know, we had a pastor here to pray and you put God in this room. You ushered God through those doors. And our job as local politicians is to take care of everyone across the board. Not our high business people and, you know, tax them appropriately. You wouldn't have to lean on the residents. You wouldn't have to do that. We have people who are donating millions and millions and millions of dollars to universities. And we can't even walk on their property because we're the essential workers and we don't add up. It's not fair. Just think about it, table it a little longer because it's, it's just not okay. And at the end of the day, you have to take care of home. And we're home. And just set the precedence for everyone else that you'll stand up for the residents who put you in your chairs today. Please do not raise the taxes. We can't afford it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Adiano. I'm from Hawkwood. And when I first heard about this, the raising of the taxes, I coughed an attitude. And then I, then I thought about it for a little bit after I, after I got, had a drink of water. And I said, you know, the best way to combat these taxes, because I, I can't afford it. I'm sure anybody else in here can't afford it. I started to pray. Prayer is powerful. I prayed for you fellow, you, you commissioners after, and I have been every day that you would do the right thing. Now, I don't know exactly what, what your expenses are and what you have to do. But as a property owner, sixty-six years old, you know, I, I'm supposed to be enjoying my, the last thirty years that I have left. And, you know, to worry about paying your gas bill, your electric bill, your house insurances that have gone up within the last four years. Four years ago, my house insurance was six hundred, six hundred bucks. Now it's twelve hundred bucks. And then when, you know, it's, it's just hard to find ends to meet and making ends to meet. But there are people a lot worse off than I am. And people that are disabled, that are on a fixed income. And I, I, as a Christian, I'm concerned about everybody, not just myself. And I just wanted to come to this meeting today to tell you, you, you folks know how difficult it is. And I just ask you to do the right thing. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I didn't plan to talk.
State your name, please.
Gerald O'Brien. I live in Union Town. Didn't plan to talk. I'm in the same boat all you are. Can you tell me one thing that's going to bring youth to this community? One thing. Commissioners, one thing. That it'll bring youth and rewildizing our county. We have zero. As you can see, none of you said a word. None of you offered anything. How many of you grew up in South Union Town or North Union? How many of you benefited by the playground program they had when we were children? It was there. We went. Our parents knew where we were. It was community. Community in with our community. The Sheepskin Trail, I would like to see how that six hundred thousand dollars was actually spent. I'm a coal miner. I guarantee you, if you brought a crew out that I worked with, it would have cost you a fraction. I'd like to see the budget for that. I think we're entitled to it. Six hundred thousand dollars is ridiculous. I'm in favor of it. I want to see it done. I'm seventy-four years old. I ride a bicycle and I ride. I rode a hundred and six miles from DC up to Williamsport. That was only part of it. I rode two hundred and ninety miles in four days. Us guys that are retired, we have projects we want to do. We have things we want to see completed. We can't do it by sitting on our butts. If we're going to do it, we got to have community, not division. And it, the tax raise is a lot. You want to keep people here? You got to reevaluate where the money's going. You got to reevaluate how it's being spent and if it's being dollar wise. The fact that with six hundred thousand dollars for a mile sounds ridiculous. I'm sure you all think it's ridiculous. One mile on a Gap Trail brings in eight hundred thousand dollars a year. You might not believe that, but when you look at the numbers, there's over one point two million people ride that trail. I was just online with a girl from New Zealand. Her and her husband flew here because they knew of the Gap Trail. Do you realize that we are the connecting link between Morgantown and the Gap Trail? This doesn't get built. The money will not ever be spent. The money is available right now. There will never be as much money available for the grant programs. Thank you. Please. Think of your youth. Think of the children. What are your kids doing? We complain about the problems.
Mr. O'Brien, just one thing. The reason it's costing so much, the state agencies are drawing up the specs for, when we get grant money from them, we have to follow their spec, specifications for bidding that out to build- that out to build the trails. And, you know, that's where the problem lies, and how much they're requiring us to do to be able to build it.
I understand.
That needs to change on a state level.
It isn't just a matter of taking a, I know, it isn't a matter of taking a trail south. You have to have the drainage, you have to have the pipes going in under everything. There's a lot involved.
Well, let me actually tell you something. At Dunlap Lake County Own Property, there's a trail proposed, a walking trail around the lake.
Yes, sir.
DEP is requiring dirt to be taken out of the ground that's been there for who knows how many hundreds, thousands of years. And a spatial dirt is to be put in place that filtrates and saturates water so the water doesn't go in the lake. Now, that's, see, this is where my problem is. Like I said, I don't have a problem with trails, but I do have a problem with pricing of these trails. It's astronomical. It's ludicrous, is what it truly is. It's ludicrous. When you actually have a railroad base, when you're talking about a railroad based trail, and it's already there, and those railroad engineers, those people who put those trails in 250, or put those tracks in 250 years ago, they don't flood, they don't hold water, everything runs off, but it's still $600,000 a mile?
That's where you say the legislatures dictate to you what must be done.
Yes.
So those people need to.
If you're taking, if you're taking their grant money.
Yes, if you're taking your grant money. Otherwise, you can go ahead and do what you have to on top. But we can't do it without the grant money. I know that.
Right.
And you know that. And believe me.
And that's why, that's why I have a problem, that's why I have a problem with the match, because the match gets sucked into that high level of cost. Because for what we're doing with the matches, you could probably put in 10 miles a trail, okay? The estimated cost for the Sheepskin Trail to finish just the trail, not counting the tunnel and the two bridges, is over $20 million. By using the state level statistics and the guidelines to put it in. Now, $20 million is a lot of money. That, in my personal opinion, does not need to be spent at this point, when we have citizens in this county that need infrastructure, they need water lines, they need broadband, they need sewage. And that, let me tell you something, that does build the economy, because people move into this county and businesses move to the county when you have those three items.
The big problem right there, your last part of your statement, businesses are a lot and people are not. It's a shame that the people who come from Morgantown to work in Uniontown Hospital, who would love to live in this county, cannot find housing. How many housing, what's the percentage? 3% of homes are available for sale in Fayette County.
Okay, your time is up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I actually, that was some of my fault. I apologize.
All right.
My name's Cindy Barton, and I didn't expect to speak today. However, the bike trails is near and dear to my heart.
Okay, so the bike trail is not on the agenda.
Okay, Sheepskin Trail. Sheepskin Trail. Okay, walking trail. Trails.
Okay.
Okay. Clarify that. What's more important to me is people survives financially. People can't go under. For our youth, what will benefit our youth? Having good homes. Having enough people in our homes. I've taken my grandsons walking on trails. How about, and here's just a suggestion, and I don't know how the uppers of the state or the DEP or any other acronyms going to handle this, but, you know, I like walking off trail. And you're older, I appreciate this. I'm older too. You know what I find, walking, knowing I want a flat surface, mark the trail that it gets rugged, it gets natural, okay? I balance better when my feet are going, I'll jump up off of a trail when I'm walking different times, get into the woods to walk, so that my balance is being used. It's more natural. We don't disturb the land, we don't rearrange the land. You mark the trail, you put up some signs, it'd be a fraction of the cost. We can still do that. Don't take money from the taxpayers, though. Please, please don't raise taxes. Listen to charity, listen to all these people, listen to the gentleman from Conneville that walked out of here that didn't get an applaud. He actually, he deserved it too. He's struggling, he may go back to Detroit. You know, I know that he wasn't, you know, in control back there, so what? You know, he's upset. But that's all I want to say, and I'm, thank you.
My name is Melanie Crash. I'm the Republican State Committee Woman from Fayette County, and I live in South Union Township. I would, I hope that you guys make the decision to not raise our taxes, because we all have budgets. As everybody, as other gentlemen pointed out, that we're all on some kind of fixed income. When we go over budget, we have no place to go. Unfortunately, when you guys go over budget, you come back to the taxpayer. That's us. We're not an endless piggy bank. We really are having difficult financial times right now, and we don't want to see our elderly have to lose their homes because of foreclosure, or make the decision between medication and food. And Mr. Vassides, you repeatedly said that you have made some of these decisions as county commissioner, based on the fact that you are saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. This building costs zero. Did that include all the renovations that you made to the building?
We got grant money for that.
Okay. So you have saved us so much money, why are you raising taxes? And these projections? And let me, just let me finish, please.
I didn't say I was saving money, I said I was, I'm not costing money. This building didn't cost us. I mean, we found ways to cut costs on it.
But, excuse me, you also noted that by making some of these decisions, you projected that you were saving 140,000 for this particular thing?
Yeah.
Over the course of 10 years, it was millions of dollars. And so then, why, if you take these projections into consideration, why are you raising our taxes? Why wasn't there better planning on your part, instead of us having to assume your lack of priorities, your planning, whatever you want to, decisions, whatever you want to call it? We, we're not an endless piggy bank. We, each of us have goals for our future, plans that we want to do with our money, that we have budgeted, we didn't budget for this. And now I hear that Laurel Highlands is going to be suing the county to reassess all of our property. So where do you think, it's going to be an endless stream of increased taxation? It has to stop at some point. And that's why we elected you. We elected you to make sure that our tax dollars are spent wisely, and that we don't have continuous tax increases. That at some point, it has to stop. So I ask you that you please either delay your decision to rework the budget, take a better look at it, see if you can't come with solutions outside of the normal way that we think. Think outside the box, and see if you can't come up with something that doesn't cause you to increase taxes, or it's a less increase. Thank you.
We have your three minutes. So just for the, for the record on reassessments, if the county is required to reassess properties, that would not increase county taxes. We would have to change our millage. We would not, we would have to have the same amount of taxation that we have now. So if the, if your property is reassessed, your individual taxes may go up, they may go down. But at the end of the day, the county's not allowed to make any, any extra revenue from a reassessment. So we have to adjust our millage to have the same amount of revenue.
And one thing I want to say, there.
You indicated that the prison was paid for by a mill increase on the last tax.
2020.
Now, you're also saying it's part of this tax. Which is, okay, the what's his one point?
Okay, so you had, okay, you had your, your three minutes, sir.
Just like a lot of other people, Roger Erdley from Jefferson Township. I had no plan on speaking today, but I just got one simple question, since it was just brought up. Is the county planning to do a reassessment? And what will that cost the county to do it? If you have an idea?
The cost is usually around four to five million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in that range. And that comes out of the general fund. So that means, that's, that's one of those catch 22s.
Because you get no more money from the big investment.
No, it's revenue neutral.
Because I think that's the biggest misconception by all taxpayers. The reassessment's going to cost you more money. It's not, unless your house is undervalued.
If you're, right, some people, some people may have an increase.
Your taxes should go up. Because I pay more than my fair share, because I put a small admission on my house, and it was reassessed, but none of my neighbors have. So, that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Macheski. I'm a county taxpayer of South Union Township and also the city of Uniontown. I just wonder, this all started with the school districts not having enough money to go ahead and do what they got to do with their realignments of their schools or whatnot. And so Laurel Highlands is coming on board to ask you guys to reassess all our properties. If there's a problem with the school districts not having the funding to properly move their children around into different school districts and the buildings, they shouldn't really have to come to all of us taxpayers. I think that that's more of a school district issue and not a county issue. I think maybe our school districts need to look at maybe going with the countywide school, that I heard a couple politicians in years past, that the smaller communities do in West Virginia or whatnot, and go to Brownsville, you know, realign with Albert Gallant in LH Uniontown, and not hit us all taxpayers. My mom struggles, my aunts and uncles struggles, they're all on fixed incomes, they're all retired. I don't want to have to step up and pay 28% in property taxes. I think it's just unjust. I really believe this all starts to, I heard that the prison is already paid for, but I think that's.
It's still in debt.
And Mr. Lur, hearing you speak, I don't know you personally, but through this meeting, I thought you were very educated, and I appreciate you running for office to help us out. And I just beg you guys not to do this to the residents of Fayette County. We have one of the poorest counties inside of the state of Pennsylvania. We pay the highest amount of gas taxes. I just read an article in the Herald Standard newspaper, which is trash, that, sorry, but it is. But I read an article in the Herald Standard saying that the city of Uniontown has over $600,000 in debt of the people in the city of Uniontown. It's under 10,000 people in population. Probably 40% of us are homeowners in the city of Uniontown or property owners, and they owe 600,000. So how can they come up with 28% more to pay for these taxes? It's just unjust, especially in today's world. I'm a single father, and I'm proud of that. I'm a hard worker. Mr. Vassides over there, his father has ran this county for decades and decades and decades. And I remember, I remember as a little child, my grandfather telling me what a good job Mr. Vassides has done for Fayette County. I hope Vin steps up to the plate and follows his father's footsteps and turns this down. And I'd appreciate your vote, Mr. Lur and Mr. Dunn as well. I just do the right things, gentlemen, and sorry to y'all for getting a little emotional, but God bless you all, Merry Christmas.
My name's Mark Lincoln. I'm from South Union Township. I'm a retired state worker. And, you know, you want to raise the mill on the taxes. I just got one thing to say. What happened whenever the legalized gambling come in, and you got the casinos and everything, where was this money supposed to go? It was supposed to help lower the taxes, it was supposed to help, you know, surely it'd help your budget. Where does it add, boys?
That.
Thank you.
Legalized gambling does not affect Fayette County's budget. It's just, just legalized, the money that the state gets from gambling proceeds does not funnel down to, whatever they said that was going to happen, didn't happen, that's before my time. And that we, the only money that we get is through a loan program for legalized, or from our casino. And it's only about $580,000 a year. So that, that money does not, that money does not trickle down to the county.
And that's even got requirements and regulations on it, or have to be followed from the state level?
So none of that, it's circled down to Fayette County or any county.
There were one other thing that I thought of too, but that was the best one I could come up with. Thank you.
You're up.
My name is John Irwin. I am the vice president of the Regional Trail Corporation, which covers Allegheny, Westmoreland, and Fayette County. I'm only here to talk about the impact of the trails to the community. As the gentleman stated earlier, it was a little incorrect, it's only like 900,000 a mile. In the study, you can look up from Trosberg and St. Vincent College in Lake Trow. Now, Allegheny County is trying to connect north on the Allegheny River to Franklin. They feel that trail has brought in that much money, they are actually taking some of their money by understanding to their budget to help construct that trail. In Westmoreland County, I don't know how familiar you people are, just north of Greensburg, there's a little town called Delmont. And there's a trail called the Westmoreland Heritage Trail that runs from Trafford to Salzburg. The up airway is right by Export. A lot of businesses have started there, and they are going to build a tunnel underneath Route 66. So it helps connect, they have the connection even better, and the county is using some of their money. My only thing is that, as he stated, Mr. Lur, you said it was 600,000 a mile? Is that what you stated?
I actually have the itemized statement.
Okay, then why? I'm just saying, that's what you're, and you're getting that from DCNR?
No, it's the actual final cost sheet.
Did you get from DCNR?
Of the build of the Mall and the Border Trail.
Oh, okay. I don't know, because they just rehabbed 12 miles of the Great Allegheny Passage, and that only cost them 450,000. So my, the economic impact of the trail is correct. So if you spend that amount of money for a trail, and whoever, that guy said connecting from Morgantown to Uniontown to Conneville, that's going to bring a lot of economics to this area. People like to do it. So, and then you're saying you spend that amount of money for a trail, but that trail gives you back a year? 900,000? How much business, industrial based businesses do you have coming into Fayette County now? You have to think of other ways of raising money and what brings in. And it seems to be tourism, and whoever said, we have, we have bikers from all over the world. We have a gentleman from Conneville that just bought some land across from the river, and I don't know, at a high price, he was thinking about putting in a, like, you know, for camping and boating on there. These trails work. And some of the homes that are just north of Conneville that are built are from the $750,000 range to a million. And you can look that one up, too.
Thank you, Mr. R.
You're up.
Thank you.
As a reminder, to keep it on, anything on the agenda, which is Sheepskin and Trails is not.
All right, I don't know if, I'm not against the trails either.
State your name.
My name is Gene Humbert, Markleisburg. I'm not against trails either, but we're still in debt, and bringing money in from the trails is not fixing our problem right now. You bought this building, zero cost, you did this, you did that. Why are we so in trouble like we are right now, then? Why, why are we here? We need, we need this fixed. I don't, I haven't never heard anything yet, how you guys are going to fix this. And another thing, I don't know if this is on the agenda, but I'm going to bring it up about the time again. You know, you guys work for us. We need, we can't be here at 10 o'clock in the morning every time you have a meeting. And, and since, and since you work for us, I think we should be the ones that vote what time we have meetings. And, and since, and since you work for us, I think we should be the ones that vote what time we have meetings. Either in the mornings or in the evenings. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name's Ronnie Smith, Jr. I, sorry, I've never done this before. You know, I come here and like I was totally blown away by how elegant some of the speakers are, how not elegant some of the speakers are. But nonetheless, there's no more, no less of importance with what they're saying and what they're trying to communicate to you guys. And you guys could at least have the fucking decency to look at us in our face while we're talking to you instead of playing up there on your bullshit, whatever you're doing, your phone's going off. What's that?
I'm keeping time, but thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We paid for you to play for your clock. Anyway, I'm a third-generation plumber, pipe fitter, 16-year member of Local 354. I have a family of four. I have a beautiful wife that works for a lawyer here in town. You're the only one that stared everybody in the eyes, by the way. Thank you. But she works for an attorney here in town as a paralegal secretary. And I've been in some of these buildings that you were talking about that needed revamped. And I've seen the rooms you spoke about that you spent all the money on. I've seen the DA's office, not because of court, anything law, like I'm not, but I, you come work in a boiler room with me, you know, with three different people from five different trades working in there in dangerous conditions. They were uncomfortable. They weren't in danger in any way. It was just a, like, being comfortable. That's what you wanted to change. And that's a waste of money, man. Like, you can't say it's not. You know, like, my whole life, my parents taught me that we're going to do better than the generation before us. And you guys are making it impossible for us to do that. Impossible, man. Gas prices ridiculous. You know, Uniontown, I used to be able, my grandma lived on Millview Street. I used to be able to play out there at daytime, nighttime. I wouldn't even walk down Millview Street in the daytime right now. And you guys are talking about all this money you're going to invest in. Generational welfare is taking over Fayette County. You guys are worried about bullshit. You know? Like, worry about us, man. Like, the horse that pulls the hardest gets beat the worst. And that's what you're doing to us, man. You know that I'm going to get up for work every single day and I'm going to go and I'm going to pay your bullshit taxes on your gas. And I want to pay whatever you put in front of me. I'm going to eat it. You know why? Because I'm too prideful not to, man. My family will not go without. And that's a fact, man. But you guys are killing us, killing us in the process. And it's bullshit. You guys sit there in your suits, looking all high and mighty, not even looking at us whenever we have talked to you. If you guys would have had this, if you guys would have had this at 6 o'clock in the evening, we'd have had to have it in the goddamn football stadium. But it's what's convenient for you. We'd have had, we'd have had 10,000 people here saying, "You're crazy raising our taxes. You're crazy." But instead, you got, you're sitting here and you smirk when certain people say things. It's, you guys are, election time's coming, man. And just remember that, man. Give us respect. You don't even look at us when we talk. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else?
My name is Paul Shimko. I've lived here my whole life in Henry Clay Township. I have a farm up there that my grandfather passed down to me and my dad passed down. Been in the family over 100 years. Taxes are $6,500. I've worked 55 years. And I've planned to make it and give my kids back something. But you know what? You guys keep moving a goalpost. By the time, if you guys keep going, I told my kids already, if you can't afford the taxes on this farm, just sell it. Don't let it be a burden. But that's a family thing that's been there for 100 years and I can't keep it. And now, you guys, I've heard all this stuff. You guys get grants, you get this, you get that. Well, then you guys throw the taxes on, oh, Buster, what happens? I don't get grants. There is nobody saying, "Here, Buster, I'll help you with these taxes." Nobody. Where am I supposed to get the money? You tell me where I'm supposed to get the money. And that's all I got to say. Just tell me where to get it.
So, I don't know how big your farm is, but just so you know, there is a, there are two programs, Clean and Green.
Well, I'm going to tell you about Clean and Green.
Let me finish my, and there's also a preserved farm that program in Fayette County.
Okay, I'm going to tell you about Clean and Green. So I go Clean and Green, then I give it to my kids down the road.
Oh, there's-
Eight years, they don't pay the taxes back anyway. So what did you say?
I don't know your specific, I'm just saying there are programs for farms. Okay. Now, is somebody who's- Is there anybody else?
Want to make sure I don't forget this. I'm John Marietta. I'm the recorder D's for the people of Fayette County. I want everybody to understand one thing here. They're borrowing $15 million, or they already have borrowed $15 million. So I figure, me being the hillbilly I am, I figure that this tax increase, 1.9, is to pay back some of that debt service. Do I have that right? Okay. So here's what I propose. I, we can fix this without raising taxes. We can fix this by reducing taxes to mils. I'll tell you how we do it. You can go back and we can, we can implement a 1% sales tax for the county across the board. That way, it isn't just the property owners that are paying for the taxes. It's everybody in the county every time they spend money. And we can put this off until next year and make sure that this doesn't, we don't have to go through this. We need to do the right thing here, gentlemen. There's people that are retired on fixed incomes and this 1% would take care of that 1.9 mil increase. And 1.9 isn't going to be enough. You might as well just go ahead and tell them that they're going to need another one and a half next year. And that's what is going to happen. I mean, we're hiding, we're hiding all these loans that we've put in place. The first year I was in office, it was $7 million and borrowed to pay off the trans loan. Then last year, you borrowed $9.5 million to pay off the trans loan. Now you're borrowing $15 million and most of that's going to go towards paying off the trans loan. Scott, you said in the paper, "We need to get away from this." And I agree with you, but we haven't. We're, it's got worse. So what's next year going to be? 20, $20 million to pay off the 15 million? This is where we're headed. I, it isn't about walking trails. Everybody knows my doctor is going to tell me on Friday that I need to walk. She's going to tell me I need to walk two miles every day. I mean, I agree with all of you. I enjoy the river. I was raised at that river. There's a rock right across from South Connelsville. We carved our name in. I spent more time in that river than probably anybody did. I love it. There's people here from Dumbarders, people here from Markleisburgers, people here from all over the county. A 1% tax across the board, sales tax would fix this and we could reduce the, we could reduce the millage. And that's what we have to do. These people got up this morning, they bought gas, they paid, they paid taxes. They parked in the parking lot. If they paid, they paid taxes. And we, we're taxed beyond, unconstitutionally. We're taxed beyond belief. This is taxation without representation because this 1.9 mil, you haven't said what it's going to be for.
I have to, I want to, I want to comment on something here. We cannot implement a 1% sales tax without legislative approval. The state legislature would have to change the law to do that. That's in their purview. We administer things, but they have to create the laws to do them. But we can't, I just want, you can't just do that. And that needs to be said.
I'm not leaving. I'm not done yet.
My name is Dana Fealk. I live in the city of Uniontown. And I have several issues. Number one, you have to go to baseline. If you buy a house and you can't afford it, then you don't do it. Some people win lottery money, they buy it and they can't maintain it. You've got to go down to some baseline budgeting and just see what you can do. I worked in county government years and years and years ago. There's a lot of dead wood, a lot of things that could be got out. Secondly, what he said, if we had a statewide, my daughter lives in Alabama, they don't have any county taxes. They have 2% extra. They have the most beautiful schools, the most beautiful parks. It's unbelievable. And secondly, you know, we as a poor county cannot, under any circumstance, you can't do this to people. People cannot, they just can't bear the burden. You've got to think of the people first, not what you're doing. Sometimes you have to cut back on things. You need baseline budgeting and see exactly what there is, what is imperative, and then go from there. Because you can't do it to people. This is a poor county with a lot, a lot of older people that you're going to just destroy their lives. Thank you.
Anybody else speaking on agenda items? All right. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for voicing your displeasure. And I am going to go to the section of the agenda under the commissioners. Do you have that number? Okay, so we have a 541, 54. We have a 54164. We're going to vote right now.
To vote right now.
Yep. So, public comment period is over. Was there anybody online? Mary? Any comments from people online?
Excuse me? Sorry. Am I able to speak?
Yes. What's your name?
My name's Kelly. I'm just confused if the sheepskin's actually on the agenda or not. On the PDF, it's listed and that it wasn't.
The, there is approval of a contract for the Nylund section of the Sheepskin Trail under Planning, Zoning and Community Development, number 12.
Okay. Am I able to make comments?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I would just ask for your support for that. I'm sorry, I have my kids in the house. But I would just ask for your support for the trail and measures for it. I just wanted to share my personal experience. I know there's rubbering, throwing everything, but I can just see if I have personal life, what the trail is doing. I live in the neighborhood and it's trail side. And there are, there were homes that were going to be lighted. And because of the trail, the turnaround of our neighborhood is highly desirable. Because of the trail, there is investment in buildings downtown with the prospect of the trail coming that otherwise would have probably been demolished. I also helped with the Union Town Farmer's Market. And I truly believe that the trail has helped the farmers market significantly. It is, because it is located trail side, we have a lot of people that walk and bike there. And that market is successful in supporting our farmers and incubating small businesses. I'm also, my family personally, we've been able to save a lot of money because we're able to walk and bike places. We only have one car. As you said, a lot of people on the trail that use the trail for transportation that don't have access to a car. So while we might think that walking trails are luxury, I would say that driving it. And a lot of people use that trail to get to work. And we even, we see it in people that are walking out, supporting, carving their own hiking trails that they don't have the means to get there. So obviously, the trail brings tourism and things of that nature. But the trail really is becoming an amenity that the community loves and it serves as transportation for people that don't have access to it. So I ask your support for this section of trail and all measures of the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, and since you guys have been here for two hours already, I am going to go to the section under Commissioners. Is there a motion to consider adoption of the 2025 general fund budget in the amount of $54,366,008? Motion. Are motions are second? I will second that motion. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Motion carries two to one. So now, we will consider adoption of an ordinance estimating, establishing the real estate tax rates for general purposes and debt services for the tax year 2025 with a general fund millage of 7.26676 and a debt service millage of 1.19772 for total millage of 8.46448. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Motion's pro per moving second. Right, second the motion, I'm sorry. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Motion carries two to one. So we're going to take a, we're going to take a recess.
You can put your property taxes in escrow and they can't watch it. Until they comply with the budget, we do not have to pay those taxes.
You okay with a recess for five minutes? We're going to recess.
Your friend Vince, you can vote it out, sir.
Take a recess for five minutes.
Full investigation into you. Full investigation. Both of you, you're bound.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Sorry. We're going to recess for five minutes.
Disappointed in you.
I know, I'm sorry.
I know, I really am.
I'm sorry.
I've been holding you to the fire the whole time and I've supported you. I'm really disappointed in you this time. Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
No, I'm not. That, they're a different sized county.
No, John, I actually, I checked into it.
We can do it, we can do it.
You have to get the state law.
Yeah. You have to actually get legislators to sign it up. I checked into it a long time.
The property owners are taking the burden on everything. And the people that live here.
Hey, I, I, John, while you're at it.
Darryl Metcalf back in the late nineties, early 2000s, actually voted trying to change.
I don't know what you're asking me.
One percent. And in that time period, we were taking up a dime a day for a dollar. Never made a good house. Anything that does put sales tax, have to. It's almost impossible because you have Philadelphia, you have Allegheny County, you have these counties.
There has to be another way. There has to be another way. There has to be another way. This 1.9 million piece can't on out. These people were. I think what everybody, I think what everybody should do is, is look at the taxes. We, the people spoke, I spoke about it. We put them in an escrow account until some judgment serves us.
Yeah, I actually checked on the sales taxes.
Yeah.
Darryl Metcalf, when he first went into office, he was a spearheading tenant in the worst way, and it never got thrown out.
Sales taxes are inherently regressive, meaning to force people to pay more for the sales tax.
Yeah. The seniors are the ones that prosper in the sense of the sales taxes. They don't buy as much.
Right. Except for the seniors, but otherwise, it's the lowest income people that get hurt the most when you kick up the sales tax. Everybody pays the same, great.
When you buy a car, you pay more sales tax. When you buy a house, you pay more sales tax.
Good to see you. Listen, all guys, I say nobody up there gets paid.
I do, but that's less than.
First thing you have to do is impress these people.
They just want to get a couple of cents. And they believe so.
This is where we live. Now we got a meeting.
What was it?
Where's our water?
I, I would drink out of. Unless there's some food.
Did you miss me much like that?
Ah, we will. Me and your socks too, but it wasn't the same as you. It was only ten.
For the Controller, Financial Condition, and she left. Oh, she's there.
Oh, she's there.
She wanted to leave.
She tried to escape, and it didn't work.
Good afternoon. Okay, for the General Fund Cash Budget, we have $5,285,345.44. The tran tax anticipation note is $4,200,000. The 24 revenue budget is $52,276,365. And the year to date was $45,603,922.1. Now for the expenditures for 2024, the budget is $56,684, I'm sorry, Year to date is $45,381,560,072. The 2023 expenditures paid in 2024 is $3,109,724.62. Due to the General Fund from CYS is $6,716,633.70. For the cash balance unconventional wells account is $179,134.75. Cash balance, the legacy account, is $754,512.34. For the cash balance bridge department account is $1,937,290,290,290,290.79. I apologize. Cash reserve for the Fund 51 is $197,886.76. If you have any questions, you can contact the Controller's Office. Thank you.
We want you to add all those numbers up now.
All right. Amy, number five, Behavioral Health Administration.
Consider approval of the following agreements and modifications. Health Choice's Professional Service Agreement 2025 to 2027, Carolon Health of Pennsylvania, Inc., and Modification Agreement Number One for 2023 to 2024, East End United Community Center, as listed.
Motion.
Second. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Number six, Building and Grounds.
Thank you.
Consider advertising for fuel bids for the period of February 2025 through January 2026.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero.
Consider advertising for bids for janitorial supplies for the period of February 2025 through January 2026.
Motion. Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Just for the record, for those two items, janitorial supplies and fuel, we bid those out every year. Just want that on the record. Number seven, Children and Youth Services.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025, 2024-25 Purchase of Service Agreement Addendum between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Pathways Adolescent Center, 370 North Seneca Street, Oil City, PA, for group home placement. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion by Dave, seconded by Vince. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 Purchase of Service Agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Crossroads Group Homes and Services, Inc., 1243 Roemer Boulevard, Farrell, PA, for group home placement services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 Purchase of Service Agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS Juvenile Probation and Blueprints, 150 West Bow Street, Suite 304, Washington, PA. Blueprints will provide foster care and group home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 Purchase of Service Agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Watts Home for Youth, 136 Manchester Street, York, PA, for transitional living residential services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Motion.
Is there a second? Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 Purchase of Service Agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and New Life Adolescents LLC, 167 Mountain View Drive, Hillsdale, PA, for residential services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Number eight, Emergency Management.
Consider ratification of the 911 Statewide Interconnectivity Grant Agreement for 2025. The county has been awarded up to $456,292.56 in statewide interconnectivity funds for 2025 projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Number nine, Human Resources.
Under Building and Grounds, consider ratification of the hiring of Melissa Bennett, Custodial Worker 1, SEIU Pay Grade 3, Step SR, $12.58 an hour, $24,531 annually, effective November 18, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under Central Department, consider ratification of the hiring of Tonya Pierce Hyder, Part-Time Clerk, Non-Union, $12 an hour, effective November 19, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under CYS, consider approval of the revocation of the hiring offer for Leah Beer, Caseworker 1, effective November 25, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under EMA, consider ratification of the promotion of Tiffany Shade to 911 Supervisor, SEIU Pay Grade 13, or 14, sorry, Step A, $25.17 an hour, $52,353.16 annually, effective November 18, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the promotion of Ryan Hoon to Planner and Training Officer, SEIU Pay Grade 17, Step C, $28.82 an hour, $59,945.60 annually, effective December 15, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under FACT, consider approval of the resignation of Cassandra Booze, Full-Time Bus Driver, CDL, effective November 25, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the resignation of Lawrence Grace, Part-Time Bus Driver, effective October 7, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under Veterans Affairs, consider approval of the hiring of Thomas Boyd, Director of Veterans Affairs, Non-Union Supervisor, Pay Grade 15, Step SR, $24.30 an hour, $47,385 annually, effective December 30, 2024.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Under Human Resources, consider approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the County of Fayette Board of Commissioners and jail employees represented by UMWA for the period of January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2028.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero.
Under Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration, consider approval to hire Felicia Farrell, County Caseworker 2, at $21 per hour, $40,950 annually, effective January 6, 2025.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval to hire Deborah Kramer, Administrative Assistant 1, at $19.25 per hour, $37,537.50 annually, effective January 6, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10, Office of Human and Community Services, FACT.
Consider approval of the Fayette Area Coordinated Transportation, Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, as presented.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the Fayette Area Coordinated Transportation Equal Employment Opportunity Program, as presented.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10, Office of Tax Services, Tax Queen.
Consider approval of the following repository bid, opened on December 3, 2024, subject to all conditions being met, for a total bid amount of $455.54, as listed.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Number 12, Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Consider approval of a bid from Plum Contracting in the amount of $454,024 concerning the construction of the Sheepskin Trail Southern.
Is there a motion?
What was this?
Sheepskin Trail Southern.
I'll make it. Motion, yes.
I'll second. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries two to one.
That's grant money would have gone somewhere else in the other part of the state if we didn't garner it 100% paid. No, no match for the Sheepskin Trail, which I've been a supporter of, you know, my entire tenure. And we've got 10 miles of this built approximately, and we need to continue. The city of Uniontown is next, and we're going to go into North Union. And we got to, we got to build this trail. It's important for economic development. It helps a lot, and it also will help our citizens locally to have that recreational opportunity for their, for them and their families.
This was a literal use it or lose it. So, next.
Consider approval for Gibson-Thomas Engineering to perform construction inspection services of the Sheepskin Trail Southern in the amount of $29,680.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. Motion's pro per moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Motion carries two to one.
Consider approval of ECMS Authorization for Ark Capella concerning the Sheepskin Trail Project.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Your motion.
Motion.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. All, uh, call for. All, uh, call for discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two one.
Consider approval of ECMS authorization for Art Capella concerning the Fayette County Bridge Projects comprising bridges seventy-two, one fifteen, two, three, and one fifty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number thirteen, Commissioners.
Consider approval of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Commissioners' Agenda Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Commissioners' Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four Commissioners' Special Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval to advertise to pave the prison lot.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Board appointments?
No.
No.
Dispersed.
Dispersed.
Yeah. Just card agreement.
There was one in the middle.
Dispersment agreement.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Consider approval of a dispersment agreement for card issuance with Rapid Financial Solutions LLC, an indirect wholly-owned subsidiary of Tyler Technologies, Inc., of three-zero-six-five North Two Hundred West, Suite Number Two Hundred, North Logan, Utah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion?
I think it's'll improve our system there, uh, with the, uh, instead of issuing checks, we can save a lot of, uh, printing costs and, uh, make it more efficient by doing it.
Postage.
Yes, postage.
Also keep track of them.
And make it more convenient for the jurors.
Yes, well, very. Um, do we take a vote?
No.
Uh, call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, then we'll go to the board appointments.
Do you, any agreement?
Um, is there a nominee for one appointment to the Fayette County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for a citizen-at-large representative with the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven?
Timothy Miller, Mills, sorry.
Nomination was made of Timothy Mills is our second. Do you want a second?
Yeah, a second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, so I, I don't have the names.
Uh, okay.
Uh, under the Fayette County Airport Authority, consider approval of one appointment to the Fayette County Airport Authority with the term to expire January seventh, twenty thirty.
Make recommendation for Kenneth Mitchell.
There's a motion for Kenneth Mitchell. Is there a second?
Right.
You a second?
Uh, I'll second it.
Yeah. Uh, motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. I'll let you read the rest of it.
Okay.
My, my throat is going.
Behavioral Health Advisory Board, consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a county commissioner representative with the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a nominee?
It's in the vicinity.
Second, that motion. Motion is probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a physician representative with the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Recommendation, Dr. Paul Hartman.
Paul who?
Hartman.
Hartman. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a representative in the professional field with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Make a motion for Danielle Rowan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a representative of local citizens organizations with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Recommendation, Harry Joseph.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a community group representative with the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
And Andrew, or, yeah, Andrew Bonney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for an at-large representative with the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
And Shannon Mo-Mo-Wallace.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Fayette County Health Center Authority.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Fayette County Health Center Authority with a term to expire January seven, twenty thirty.
Glenn S. Winterhalder. Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion?
PC on anyone that, uh, applied before the deadline, so.
Uh, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Fayette County Housing Hospital Authority.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Fayette County Hospital Authority with the term to expire January seven, twenty thirty.
Commander Garrett Brinker.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Fayette County Housing Authority.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Fayette County Housing Authority with the term to expire January seven, twenty thirty.
And Harry Joseph. Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. industrial development authority.
Consider approval of one appointment to the Industrial Development Authority with the term to expire on January seventh, twenty thirty.
Just Phil. Just Phil. Paul, I'm sorry, Paul.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, North Fayette Water, District.
Consider approval of one appointment to the North Fayette Municipal Water Authority with the term to expire January seventh, twenty thirty.
And Barbara Fesco. Second.
Motion's brought and moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.